It just said a graph on it.
Okay.
So we can't physically file it until obviously the plat is filed. So what it is in Platts, yes.
Okay, because it says here the annual meeting held during October two thousand and eighteen.
That was for the other part.
Okay.
The other, other section that was the larger pieces that came off of twenty nine sixty five.
Okay.
So this will be its own, these fifty five lots will be its own subdivision at the end of the day.
Okay.
Um, so when the plat gets filed, it'll just be these fifty five lots in that Ag Association.
Okay, so you're, you're selling the property and then the owner, the new owners will be the ones to build their houses.
Correct.
And you have this specifications on what kind of housing they can build or not?
We have some light restrictions in that Ag Association. Um, it's basically fifteen hundred square figure more of living, interior living.
Mm-hmm.
Has to be new home construction and then pass that. It's really up to the client to advise it on what they're going to do with it. They have to meet all county. Regulations obviously for permitting and things like that, but that's the minimum we're putting.
Okay.
Is there just one road coming off the Farm and Market Road entrance line?
So twenty, I forget the name, I apologize, the number on the backside, I would give this like, whether twenty nine sixty five is the main entrance. There's another road on the backside. It's just a rock road, but that road passes all the way through and connects to the back road as well. And then there's a little loop in the middle.
The back road you mentioned, it's like county road.
Yes.
Thirty nine oh nine.
I believe, no, it's gonna be thirty four or something.
Yeah, it's three thousand something, I'm not, I don't have it off the top of my head.
I can't. Thirty four, twenty something, twenty.
It's identified on the, uh, uh, oh, thirty nine oh eight, thirty nine oh six. Oh wait, yeah, thirty nine oh eight.
That's right. That's, that's correct.
Yeah, we're tying into the water line back there. So it's right here on Belvin Beach as a. Schedule. Right.
Yes. Uh. So, and then there won't, most people be going out to the highway. They won't be going out that way. But it would be kinda, they're gonna be going way out of their way if they go down and.
Is it gonna be gated?
On both ends, yes, sir.
That's actually a homeowners association.
It's the same thing, yes, sir. We just call it something different.
Mm-hmm.
It's a. It's not, it doesn't have that name on it. Brian, just fall in here anytime, uh, on, on this. We, we call this because this is the first. I'd say big subdivision that I've done, uh, for sure, I think, and Milton's. Well, probably for, probably for four of us here. I know Argent's had some bigger ones, uh, but it's, it's, it's new for. I know me and Andy and. Brandon.
So I think I agree with you, uh. He's on his water deal. I know that. MacBee also, you go down, they get a little, yeah, we'll furnish the water, we'll.
Right.
You know, that, that, we know you're gonna furnish it, but you're, you're gonna put the subdivision in and then nobody has water for five years, you know? So we've gotta do a better job of figuring out when, when the water will actually be provided. I know that. Some developers even have to put in a little money.
Mm-hmm.
To, uh.
Yeah, they have a deposit to get the engineering started and everything. Um, we have not pulled the trigger on it yet, just because we were waiting to get approvals. Um, but once, once approvals are in place, we, we intend to start right away. I know it's easy to say, but. We've got fifty five lots to sell and we can't sell them without it. So it's, it's gonna be one of those. We've got to get it started right away.
Yes, sir.
Well, part of the approval is something that's saving you the water.
Oh, yeah, we have that. We already have all that from MacVee, but like we said, it's one of those things where you get an approval, but when does it start? I agree with you on that. Yeah.
Now, are you gonna put in the, uh, who's gonna actually put in the water lines? Are you? You're gonna do it?
We're gonna hire a subcontractor, obviously, to put in the water lines with MacVee's inspections. Um. They don't have a requirement that they have to install it, just that their engineers have to engineer it.
Sure. Well, we, we just need some kind of guarantee on that, whether, whether the bond is payable to. MacBee or whether it's payable to us or whether it's payable to the contractor you're hiring. Then we just need something, uh, to assure. The public that, that this water's taken care of. Of course, bonds are cheap if they're never filed on, and so, uh. It's a.
Yeah, we can, and we can take care of that. And we could probably work something out with MacBee where we, you know, get all the engineering paid for upfront and then we're all done and.
That'd be, that'd be the best, that'd be the best system.
Just what we need. I know we got this letter from MacBee saying that they have the past and service and everything, uh. But, you know, we need something, hey, this, this developer is good to go. We've got everything worked out. We're good with our contractor, you know, all that kind of stuff. Something.
Yeah, and we gotta pay it anyway. So it doesn't make, you know, if we do it now or we do it afterwards, it's just we're taking a little risk of not having a physical approval upfront.
Yes, sir.
So, but I mean, we could certainly do that. That's not.
And with that a little issue, we found out all the, all the, uh. Your, your, uh, uh, Ag Association, all these restrictions that you're going, your, uh, restrictions in covenant. They need to be filed before the plat. Susan says she's figured out a way that she can give you the number. Of what the plat's gonna be, so you can file those restrictions and show what the, the plat, the number, the filing number of what the plat will be. You file them, then you come right in behind it and file, uh, the plat. The, there again, we've got some people there. Are not playing well. They go file their plat and then they don't follow the restrictions.
On that, I'm just double checking that. Will you be doing it by the same day as that, that plan?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I've never done it that way. So that'll be new for me. It'd be great.
Well, well, when people come in, they, they say they'll do all this. They come in, they file their plat. Then they turn around, walk off. They don't follow those, those, those deeds, those restrictions and covenant, showing that this is a, uh, an Ag Association covering the road and everything. And, and we've already, they've already approved and filed the plat and the plat.
Now, if we can do it that way, I'm happy. We gotta file it anyway before we close on the first lot itself.
Yes, sir.
To have them enforceable. So.
That's right.
I, uh, I wanna make, yeah, if we can do it before the plat's filed and do it all same day, I'm, I'm perfect with that.
What's come up is there's, there's been some people come in and, and of existing subdivisions. They've come in and bought a piece of property before those restrictions were filed and they bought it. And now the developer comes back and says, hey, now I want to file these restrictions. And these people come in and say, hey, you can't file that on me. Sorry about this. And they're right.
Yeah.
And so there, there again.
Yeah, we do that on.
Their scars are turning the brain for us.
Right.
Well, we're, we're getting scars and we're learning from them. So, uh, so y'all, uh, so are, are we good on that? If he gets everything squared up on the, on the water and, and then he shows us all the stuff that he's gonna do on the roads and files that prior to the plat? We'll make it contingent, when we approve it, it's contingent that all this is filed prior to the plat. And if that works for y'all. And then the, the second thing, or the one thing we've gotta talk about is all his fees. He's paid way over the fifteen hundred dollars in fees to Mr. Addit. So in a minute, I'm gonna make a motion that would waive all, all the county fees, uh, and, uh. The application fee and the approval fee, uh, because that's what we've always done in the past. But I, I needed to know that from the court before he makes his application down there because we've got to put something on there for Susan on what he's paying. So. Uh, well, that, that's where, that's what I called all y'all together for. And, and what we'll do is we'll, we'll hear, we'll approve it all two weeks from this day after tomorrow. It'll be on the agenda if that works for you. That gives you two weeks and two days to wind it all up and, and here we go.
Sure.
So.
Do you have a estimate how much you spent in these? Uh, I don't have it in front of me at the moment. I would, I haven't seen the last young boys come through.
Uh, uh, Brian assures, he'll, he'll send us documentation of what his fees were out there. So, I mean, he, Dave's gonna be out. Whole lot more than fifteen hundred dollars. We're just, all we're doing is, is giving them credit on fifteen hundred dollars.
So we're not actually gonna make any decisions today? Is that what you're saying?
Other than the fees. I'm gonna make a motion here in a minute whenever we're ready to waive all filing fees, all county filing fees on the. On the application and the approval fee. Now, he'll still have some reporting fees, uh, when he's ready. And, but Virgil, will, I mean, are we covering everything?
Yeah, I, I believe we are. What, what I'd like to see is the deed restrictions and everything. Be brought to us right up front, the plat and everything on the first file. When, when you come to pay that first fee, all that should be filed then. And then we can look at, we've got thirty days to look at it. Will we get it on, see anything wrong?
That's right.
But most time, we've looked at it prior to that and we know everything's right.
Yes, sir.
But we, we.
Avoid the deed restrictions or included in the packet for today's meeting.
Yeah, yeah, they've got them all.
That's what I'm saying. That, that everything's filed in and so we've got, if anything goes wrong, we've got that. Thirty days to study it to make sure.
Yeah, he's gonna, as soon as he's ready properly today, if, if the court waves the fees, he's gonna fill out it, he's gonna turn in his application today.
Okay.
And then we'll have thirty days from the day to look at it. He'll, he's, he's got everything ready to give us. So. And Brian's looked at, looked at him how many times? So.
Right.
And, and.
You're asking me to do one last footnote, but they didn't resubmit it. So we, we need lines over it.
Yes.
Along with all the comments we addressed, we should do that.
Yes. So, so I'll make a, I'll make a motion that, that would waive the filing fees on the application and the final fee. Then, at this time, we'll move forward from there.
All right, motion has been made. Is there a second?
No second.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes.
So, I think we're, I think we're good to go, gentlemen. Uh. That, that'll let Dave make his application out or whenever he does it, whether it's today or next time. Or whenever he come back, uh, the thirty day clocks, when the starts in and, and we will have it either. Which was two weeks from Wednesday or 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 we'll have to call another special session before that, but we'll we'll have you going within that thirty days.
Okay. I'd like to make time of the uh non-wet season to get some of this infrastructure.
Yes sir. Yes sir. So have you got any other questions or?
No, that's it. Uh well, Wednesday, so if not this Wednesday, it'll be a week from Wednesday I come back out.
Two weeks, right, two weeks, right, we went there.
Two weeks Wednesday, you know, every other.
The uh. June seventh.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I'll get the application. I assume I go across hall.
Right, right, yes, right, right down past the end, past the foyer to the first door, next door on the left.
Sure.
And that'll that'll get things rolling and and. We'll have plenty of time as soon as soon as Brian looks at it the last time, he'll send it over to us and that'll give uh. These guys time to look at it and and then we'll go from there.
You guys have any other questions to me?
No, sir.
All right.
Y'all need anything else?
We appreciate.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
All right, item number five, is there a motion to adjourn?
Go ahead.
Second.
All right, motion by Chris and second by Murda Melch and all in favor say aye, uh all in the pose like sign. Motion passes, meeting adjourned at nine twenty four A M.
Wasn't everything clear as mine?
I've got. I gave you a copy of my notes for the first part, maybe if you want.
I'll listen to the reporting.
Okay.
Sorry, I I only got two people in my office.
Well, that's okay. I'm sorry I put you out. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you. Are you going to your office?
It's not.
Do I have to go to your office? Yeah, I am. Okay. Yeah.